And I'll call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. We're going to begin tonight by welcoming everyone who's in attendance and also those who'll be viewing the meeting on G10 television. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Randy Thomas, followed by the invocation. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we pause again to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day, to give you thanks for our city, and for us being able to serve in our various roles in our city. You have gifted each of us with the privilege of seeing a new year, that we may be of service to you and to others, and we pray that in our roles as city officials, that we will, our service would always be acceptable in your sight, and that it would be helpful and beneficial to our fellow citizens. We pray for our military, who are serving here and around the world, and for their anxious families, and as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
The council should have all have received a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and at this time I'd entertain a motion to adopt.
Removed.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Come to our first section of public comment for the evening. I think we have some people here to speak at public comment, not at public hearing, correct?
Unless they signed up, Mr. Mayor, they're here for the hearing.
Okay, so no one has signed up for the public?
I can inquire if you'd like.
Right, I think it might be two, it might be looking at two different things there.
Let me just make sure.
Okay. I think it's two different, different issues.
We do have, Mr. Mayor, some folks in A and B who we know want to speak at a public hearing coming up in a moment, but nobody for public?
I just wanted, didn't want to mix up two different issues.
Yes, sir.
All right, so now we have adoption of amendments from the January 4, 2022 workshop meeting, and the six consent items that are listed on the proposed agenda. Move for adoption.
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us down to item number seven on the agenda tonight, and this is for the annexation of land that the city owns in the Williamsburg area, and this is for the, let me get to it, this is for the 395.69 acre parcel identified for future recreation use, and Dr. Woodruff will be presenting this item.
Mayor, Mr. Council, good evening. You will recall that several weeks ago, the city announced the purchase of approximately 400 acres. This property has been in the ETJ, but it has never been annexed into the city. This particular item this evening will make this become part of your corporate limits. So we'll be happy to answer any questions, but it's actually a very simple matter of annexing property that the city currently is in the ownership of.
Any questions of Dr. Woodruff at this point? I will open up public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this particular issue, and agenda item number seven? Mr. Mayor, is no one here?
No response.
So, Council, you're being asked to consider the annexation ordinance of this property.
Mayor Phillips, I move that the staff adopt, that council adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion dismissed. Item number eight. This is a public hearing for a public housing authority, and I'm going to have John Carter, our city attorney, make a presentation to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. There's only five people who are in A and B, and that's, and so I've asked the Ms. Marshman to bring those down so they could hear my presentation, to be seated here, but we do have some folks who've come this evening to speak at the public hearing after I make a few remarks and Dr. Woodruff makes a few remarks. Let's see if this thing works. Mayor and Council, this evening you're holding a public hearing on housing authority in the state of North Carolina. First thing I wanted to hold up and show you is a document. This is chapter 157. Under the chapters, you have different sections, and I'll refer to several sections here, but I want you to see the length of it and the volume of it there. And this is what we'll be referencing here. The first thing you'll note is under 157-4, and we call these different sections, so this section, it says that any 25 residents of a city or within 10 miles of a city can petition the mayor and city council for a public housing authority. And as you're aware, and we shared this with you, the mayor and city council did receive this petition, and this was filed with our city clerk on November the 2nd, 2021, and there was a public notice advertised in the Daily News on January 6, 2022, which I actually happened to send out to everyone because Mr. Jackson inquired about it as far as the notice that went out, and that is required that you give 10 days' notice of the hearing date, and that was done in the Daily News as required by law. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to determine the need for an authority and to allow public input into that through the public hearing. As I walk through the different things, you'll see my slides, but I'm going to actually, in many of these cases, read you directly from the statute what the statute says. And this will be where I first start. For you to determine the need or the lack of a need after a public hearing, it says, and I quote, "The council shall determine, colon, number one, whether in sanitary." Now, that term is a term that's not usually used by us here in North America, United States, but I've Googled it, and apparently that's an English term, but it means the same thing, unsanitary and dirty, et cetera. But if the term is insanitary, and actually the petitioners use that very term in their petition, but whether insanitary or unsafe inhabited dwelling accommodations exist in the city and said surrounding areas, and then it says and slash yours, so it's disjunctive, whether there's a lack of safe or sanitary dwelling accommodations in the city and said surrounding areas available for the inhabitants thereof. So that is, I'm reading directly from the state statute. The 157, which I held up and showed to you, does not set a timeline for your determination. As I've indicated to you, the petition was actually filed on November 2nd, but with the holidays and et cetera, it was mentioned at several meetings that we would actually set aside this meeting to have this hearing, public hearing tonight on January the 18th. But there's no time to set forth that it has to be heard within 30 days, 60 days, or anything of that nature. Now, the conditions or considerations, and again, I want to read these from you, I'm going to show you these here on the board, but it basically says, quote, "In determining whether dwelling accommodations are unsafe or in sanitary, comma, the council shall take into consideration the following, colon, the physical condition and age of the buildings, colon, the degree of overcrowding, colon, the percentage of land coverage, colon, the light and air available to the inhabitants of such dwellings, colon, the size and arrangement of rooms, colon, the sanitary facilities, colon, and the extent to which the conditions exist, which might endanger life or property by fire or other causes. Additional considerations, I believe this is appropriate for the council to take into consideration are, are there existing housing authorities?" And the answer is going to be yes, there are two in Jacksonville, "and what actions are being taken by the private sector, and are there public-private partnerships?" And we'll talk about those as we go through the program and the presentation this evening. First thing I wanted to do is to give you a little bit of the history of Jacksonville and housing authority creation. In September of 1968, a housing authority was created here in the city of Jacksonville. And then in 1991, the housing authority out of Goldsboro came, and they wanted to build 21 units, which they did subsequently build, over here on JLD Drive, which is off Plaza Drive, which is between Plaza Manor and, on the same side as Plaza Manor and Gumbrunch Road, they're on the right. They built their 21 units, but in order for them to do that, at the law at that time, it is not the law today, but the law at that time, according to Mr. Dotson and his presentation to council, was that you could only have one housing authority in the city at that time. So the city at that time had to dissolve the housing authority. So the housing authority had to meet, and I thought it was interesting that this was the Daily News line, quote, this is on December 14, 1991, "The Jacksonville Housing Authority met Friday for the first time since 1968." So this housing authority had never met, according to the Daily News, and I will, from 1968 until they met, and Mr. Bitner, our mayor pro tem, was the manager at that time, and I think they had to find the members of the housing authority to get them to meet, but they had to meet and ask for the housing authority to be dissolved by the Secretary of State, in addition to the council's asking, and so that was done, and there was a cooperative agreement entered in with the Goldsboro folks, and their official name is Eastern Carolina Regional Housing Authority, and they still operate those units here today. But again, that is the history. Now, where it picks up there and what the city has done since that time, it's not created a public housing authority, but it has done many things that will be talked about by Dr. Woodruff as he makes the next presentation when we finish this one. The statute also goes into other ways to deal with this in addition to a public housing authority. You certainly could have a public, and when I speak of public housing authority, I talk about standalone. It is like the TDA. It is an authority in and of itself that deals with their business, they can, and I'm going to get into these in a moment, but they can be sued, they can sue others, et cetera, it's a separate authority outside of council. But in addition to the housing authority, you can have a redevelopment commission, and of course, the city council programs that you initiate for your city staff to work on can be done without a public housing authority, and we'll talk about those in a few moments. The statute requires that you adopt a resolution, whether you establish a housing authority, a standalone housing authority, or whether you deny the petition. Now, I didn't bring any resolutions tonight, so there's no action as far as you passing a resolution one way or the other, because we, the staff, Dr. Woodruff and I, and Ron, we wanted to get your thoughts, and so hopefully at the end of the public hearing and all the presentations and so forth, there will be a motion to either do one of two things. I would make a motion that the city attorney and management be instructed to prepare a resolution to establish a Jacksonville Housing Authority, or a motion, that I hereby make a motion for a resolution to be prepared whereby the city attorney and management be doing a resolution to deny this petition. So again, at the end, but no petitions, no resolutions have been prepared for you, but again, a resolution has to be, has to be prepared. So you have option one, of course, there are the options, finding a need and therefore establishing a standalone housing authority, or option two, a resolution denying the petition. Now, if option one is the direction the council wants to move, then the first thing is that the mayor, of course, by being here, would get notice of that decision, and the statute is very clear. The statute says the mayor appoints five to nine commissioners and a chairperson to head up this authority. This is the mayor's prerogative, is set out by statute. TDA is a little bit different, and I want to use the two to compare it with TDA, you know, you have nominations, et cetera, the council sets up who you want to be on the TDA, but here the statute clearly says the mayor has that authority. The mayor is the one who appoints commissioners, and if someone doesn't serve or can't serve later, and the chairperson, then again, the mayor is to appoint new members to take that, those positions. Then those commissioners would come together, and they would do an application, and they would have to prepare that and send it to the Secretary of State. So that's option one. Option two, of course, would be a resolution whereby the petition would be denied. Now I want to move over into my statute here, and this is 157, I'm going to talk about several statutes, but we're still on 157, and I want to go over to you, as I've told you, they are a standalone authority, just like the TDA is a standalone authority, and they have powers. And I want to go over those powers with you, and for several of these, I'm going to actually read again from the statute so that you will know exactly what those powers are. So bullet one, bullet one, it says here, quote, the TDA, excuse me, the Public Housing Authority would have the power to acquire, operate, or manage such a housing project or owners of, excuse me, housing project, and to administer federal housing assistance subsidy payments for such project. So that is number one. Number two, the Public Housing Authority would have the power and authority to provide for the construction, reconstruction, improvement, alteration, or repair of any housing project or any part thereof, end quote. Number three, the quote, "Housing Authority shall have the right to make construction and other loans to developers or owners of residential housing." Number four, the statute says, "The Housing Authority has the authority to act as an agent for the federal government in connection with the acquisition, construction, operation, and management of a housing project or any part thereof." Yeah, and of course, they could have the right to apply, as we'll talk about here in a moment, for funding. Then number, number five, "The Housing Authority has the right to prepare, carry out, and operate housing projects." Number six, "The Housing Authority would have the right to lease or rent any of the dwellings or other accommodations, or any of the lands, buildings, structures, or facilities embraced in any of the housing projects, and to establish and revise the rents or charges thereof." Number seven, of course, to do all these things, they have the right to enter the contracts. Number eight, they have the right to issue debt. Number nine, quote, "Public Housing Authority has the right to acquire by eminent domain any real property, including improvements and fixtures thereon," so they have the right of condemnation. Number 10, they would develop plans in accordance and that they want to, to carry out as far as moving forward housing projects and the other powers that they have. And number 11, they have the power to demolish the slum units. I want to go back just a second because I want to state to you, you and your CD department have actually been doing these things already. Going back to the first page, there have been loans made to developers, and we've been in third and fourth place on some of those loans when, when times were better, and we'll talk about times here in a moment, as far as the money that you got through CD funds and so forth, but they have certainly done that. They have also, the last one, demolished slum units, clean and green. That's the power of housing authorities, they have that right. So there's different positions here, but everyone can do different things. Receive assistance from other governments, certainly we are an entitlement city, and we receive CD funding, and that funding is used in many ways to help folks to retrofit, to rehabilitate their homes with low-interest loans, some that are forgivable over a period of time, others, they pay back at a nominal interest rate, and again, like I said, even with developers, there have been, there have been loans made to developers. I want to pause there for a moment because we're now going to go and leave chapter 157, and I want to talk to you about chapter 160A. Take my paper straight here. 160A is another chapter in the North Carolina General Statute, and you may have heard me mention 160A because it is the actual chapter that governs how municipalities operate. It sets up the city council manager form of government, it sets up finance laws, et cetera, et cetera. Now, in the last year, we told you that the legislature took out all of the planning ordinances out of 160A, and they put it into 160D. So the planning ordinances were taken out of 160A, and they were also taken out of the county ordinance, and they were all put into 160D, so we operate under that. And I mentioned that to, to let you know, when I tell you about something that the council has done in the past, it's going to say 160A, but that now has been moved over to 160D, okay? If you remember, you called a special meeting at the end of 2020 to deal with the land and the commons, and when I stood before you that night, I said, "When you walked into this room, you thought you were just walking in this room as mayor and city council as usual, but in fact, you're walking in this room as a housing authority and as a redevelopment commission." And if you recall, I actually read to you and showed you the code as far as the city code for the redevelopment commission is actually codified in the city code. But what I want to tell you now is, I want to give you the state statute that basically allows you to be a housing authority, that is, you city council, to be the housing authority or a redevelopment commission, and I want to read this again from the actual statute, and this is now 160D 1311, quote, "A governing board may exercise directly those powers granted by law to local government redevelopment commissions, and those powers granted by law to local government housing authorities, and may do so whether or not a redevelopment commission or housing authority is in existence in such local government," period. You can be a housing authority, you can be a redevelopment commission, even though I've told you there's at least two public housing authorities that are operating in the city of Jacksonville. You do not have to be a housing authority because you are empowered by this statute. I want to give you one example besides the example I gave you, that what y'all did back at the end. This is a resolution from 2003. It's a resolution that's designating procedures for sale of community development property, and in this, it has three whereas's, but one of them is whereas GS 160A at that time, because we're talking about 1, 2003, authorizes the city council to exercise the same powers as the municipal housing authority. And by this resolution, that council at that time resolved that the city council designates that homes be sold to qualified low to moderate income buyers in accordance with GS 157-9A. 157, housing authority. So this council in 2003, using the power this given by now 160D to act as a housing authority, gave the CD department the authority to, to sell homes and to operate under that particular statute. So again, you can and you have, I believe, by that, the authority to act as a housing Now we're going to leave state law, and we're going to go to federal law. Federal housing programs. Eighty-five years ago, in 1937, there was the Housing Act of 1937 that gave federal assistance to help state and city housing authorities to provide homes for low-income This law stood from 1937 until it was modified in 1998. During this period of time, there were many cities in North Carolina and all over the United States that began public housing authorities, and they built public housing projects, and those projects had to be rented to low-income persons. It wasn't the mixed, where you have certain fair market renters, if you will, and certain low-to-mod renters and so forth, those are exclusively, have to be rented to folks who are in the low income. Well, in 1998, the act was amended, and you may find the name Faircloth familiar. He was a North Carolina senator, his name was Locke Faircloth, from Clinton, North Carolina. Bill Clinton was the president at that time, but under the Faircloth Amendment, and I'm going to read that amendment to you, this is what the law says, and this is still the law today. The amendment says, quote, "A public housing agency may not use any of the amounts allocated for the agency from the capital fund or operating fund for the purpose of constructing any public housing unit, comma, if such construction would result in a net increase from the number of public housing units owned, assisted, or operated by the public housing agency in October 1, 1999, including any public housing units demolished as part of any revitalization program." Bottom line is that the Congress said then, and the law is now, that if you're a housing authority and you had 1,000 units, you can never have any more than 1,000 units. Now, you may be able to retrofit some of those units over a period of time, but you can't have another, we're not going to give you money from these two funds, this federal money, to build any more units. The, I did some research on this law, and this came from, it's called the Faircloth Amendment Explained, because there's folks that are always talking about trying to do away with that amendment, but apparently the, and the article goes on and says that the movement, that is, the Faircloth Amendment, was grounded in a belief, quote, "That public assistance programs were detrimental to people's ability to achieve economic independence by concentrating all low-income persons in a single housing complex," end quote. So because of that belief, they said, whoa, we're going to stop here. And I believe, and there's others here that will speak here at the public hearing, who will talk about other ways to build public, to build affordable housing and so forth. But again, even in this article, and I think this will resonate with you, it says, "It's not the Faircloth Amendment that's really giving folks a problem these days. The problem comes from the federal funding constraints. Those limits are often substantially higher than the number of units that housing authorities can currently maintain." It gives these examples. The Philadelphia Housing Authority can have 20,000-plus units, but they only have 14,000 units. Chicago Housing Authority can have 35-plus, but they only have 21,000, and Atlanta can have 35, excuse me, 11,000, right at 12,000, but they only have 3,500. And the reason is because with just receiving the low-income rents that they receive, they can't do the necessary maintenance and so forth, so they've taken what I'll call some of them offline. It actually goes into a lot more detail, but it says, "Many housing authorities have unfunded maintenance and rehabilitation needs, including New York City Housing Authority, which needs to spend an estimated $45.2 billion in the next 20 years just to keep its existing We have had conversations, and we've had emails from our local HUD folks in Greensboro, and they say since 1999, to their knowledge, there have been no public housing authorities created in the state of North Carolina. Again, the lack of available federal funding, even if a public housing authority is created, is probably going to diminish any ability for them to do anything as far as construction of new housing units. Now, at this time, I want to turn over to Dr. Woodruff and let him pick up with the general housing.
John, which of these, is this the one you're using?
That's the one I'm using.
Okay. John's done a great job of setting the law for you. I want to stress the fact that as we make this presentation, neither John nor I nor anyone of the staff denies- anyone on the staff denies the fact that there is a housing issue. No one is saying that there is not a need for housing in this community. What we are saying, though, is here are the facts about establishing a housing authority. You are here tonight to hold a public hearing on the question, should you or should you not establish another public housing authority? The question is not, is there a housing shortage? I'll raise my hand right now, put my left hand on the Bible and say, "There is a need for more housing in this community." But that is not the question before you this evening. Our population, you have seen that number, recently the census released it, 72,723. You also, as a city council, almost every one of you has been in this chamber, and you have seen development plans come over the last decade, and you can see that we have built over 2,600 units. But Jacksonville is a growing area. You can see 787 single-family homes, over 1,800 multiple-family homes. Fortunately, you're also aware that we have five single-family subdivisions that are coming out of the ground today that are going to add another 700 to 1,000 residential units to Jacksonville. From a community development block grant standpoint, we have assisted by giving low-interest loans, or in some cases, grants, to three developments that totaled 200 units over the last 10 years. These are listed here. Even without being a housing authority, as John has shown you, the state law gives you the power to do the things that Chapter 157 says that a housing authority could do. Why? Because of 160D. You have, in fact, authorized these programs. Let's talk about the 10 programs that are currently available at the federal level. There are 10 programs. The first is the capital fund. For many years, the capital fund was where new developments were totally funded. Today, it is only for modernization. Why is that? The reason why is because, and I'll use the loss leader at a restaurant. Let's say that you have come into such-and-such shack. Catch where I'm going? And if you do this, we're going to give you a free beverage. Well, guess what? You can't run your business on free beverages. You have to make up the money somewhere to cover. The problem with the capital fund program was that from 1937 until 1998, the folks who were asked to live in those developments were all low-income, and therefore, the rents were so low that, as John has just stated to you, there was not enough money for maintenance. And that's again why in 1998, they quit using the capital fund for new because they needed every penny of the capital fund to redevelop. The second is demolition. You know 150. Mr. Jackson was sitting on the excavator when the 150th unit was torn down, what, three months ago, two months ago? Did a pretty good job. If you want a part-time job, we have an opening in Equipment Operator, sir.
I'll keep that in mind.
Home ownership. Sell new and existing. Look what you have done through your community development block grant program in building brand-new homes. Now, as you're going to see in a minute, you've only built 27 of them, and we need to build more. The Hope 5 is for revitalization. The housing choice is for Section 8 vouchers. You have mixed finance, which is for new development. This is the program where the federal government is now turning to try to address the issue of the need for affordable housing. It's through the mixed finance program. In different words, the mixed finance program is what? Public-private partnerships. It's grants. It's tax incentives. Moderate rehab, it's for rehabbing existing units. Moving to work, that's for incentives for the individuals who are in these developments to help them move out. Operating funds, just what it says, is for subsidy for operating. Residential opportunity, that's for support services. In summary, the federal government is spending literally trillions of dollars every year, but only one program is there for new construction. You have three for rehab and modernization, one for slum removal, one program for new, one program for housing vouchers, four programs for other projects. John has already covered this, but it is important. This is the cornerstone of where you are today. 1937, the federal government recognized after the Depression that this country was in trouble when it comes to housing. They did many things positive. One of those that they did positive was to establish the Housing Act of 1937. It started the role of putting government into building housing. Having a little difficulty with my clicker, I apologize. You also heard that in 1998, the Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act amended it by the Faircloth Amendment. And you have seen what John just said. What it says again is this, if you're a housing authority, they're going to help you maintain it, but they're not going to give you any federal money to build new units. Why is that? Well, if I can go to the next slide. First of all, it is the belief that affordable housing industry, that public housing programs can be improved to help low-income people achieve economic independence. But past public housing complexes have shown that concentrating people into areas of poverty and as a result, have had a negative impact. You know as well as I do, you have visited large cities, and you have seen the public housing projects. You have seen the reputation of those. The federal government recognized that everything that we've done for years had good intentions. But guess what? With every good intention, you had to be careful for the unintended consequences. The 1937 law said that it's housing for only the moderate-income and low-income people. Being quite polite, wealthier people were not allowed to move in there. Why? Because the program was for low-income people. The Housing Act of 98 says housing for low and moderate-income people within mixed-income development. No one wants a community, a subdivision, a neighborhood, a whole city made up of just rich people. No one wants a city made up of just poor people. The best community is what? A community where we all are together, and we're all striving for the same common good. That's what the 1998 amendment recognized, is that concentrating people into low-income developments was not good. The Faircloth Amendment was a new direction. It was based on the belief that government could not fund or solve the problem alone. The solution must be a partnership between the government and the private sector. And that's why the one program that they have today is based upon the public-private partnership model with tax incentives. There simply is not enough federal tax money to spend your way out of this. The only way that you're going to spend your way out of this is how? Getting the private sector to be a partner with the public sector. And of course, it set up the mixed income and economic development. John mentioned this, but for the record, I think it's important. What have you as a city done to address housing? Well, it may seem like a little bit, but you started a public-private partnership that Dr. Washington took to the National League of Cities and won a national award for what? Building single-family homes to put low-income people in. We have not had one of those homes go into bankruptcy. Yes, we've had a couple who got behind, but they caught up. Yes, we had one lady who passed away, and we had to do something with that unit. We currently have 12 vacant lots available for new homes. Do you know what the real issue is with getting people into those new homes? Now, the mayor's looking at me like, "What is 520?" It's a credit score. If you don't have a credit score of 520, you cannot even qualify for the Community Development Block Grant Single Family Home Program. We have people on a waiting list. We could fill every one of those 12 vacant lots with new homes today, except for one problem. We don't have 12 people who have a credit score of 520. That's why one of the things that your staff has done is to set up training programs and financial coaching. Pam and Tracy hold almost every other month a training session to help people know how to manage their money. I would also want to point out that this council has now worked through community development block grant money and have assigned over $800,000 to the Onslow Community Outreach for the homeless shelter and soup kitchen. That's a federal program. You're allowed to do it. And as employees, you know that every Friday, we allow employees to wear blue jeans. Now, I have to admit, the city attorney has never shown up in blue jeans. But the city manager, every Friday, shows up in blue jeans and pays $5. And where does that money go? Any city employee who wants to wear blue jeans on Friday, you pay $5, and that money goes to a local charity. And many times, that money has gone where? To the homeless shelter or the soup kitchen. Just recently, you signed a purchase and sales agreement for 17 acres of land at a 30% discount. For what purpose? Affordable housing for mixed families and seniors. You have supported the county's $5-million program to help build more affordable housing in this community. And recently, we signed a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Onwassa, so that the city and Onwassa are working to extend water and sewer lines to an affordable housing development out on Blue Creek School Road. The reason why I'm listing those is I think it's important, when you're not inside the government every day, you don't realize the things that your city government is doing to address these problems. Now, have we solved them? Absolutely not. Are we going to solve them this year? Absolutely not. But are you sitting on your hands and doing nothing? Absolutely not. You should be proud of the things that you have done to address affordable housing. But you also have to continue the commitment. We're not there yet. You know that I love sports analogies. Now, Mr. Bittner and I watched Big Ben as he retired Sunday night in his last game, although he hasn't officially announced it, he certainly seems to indicate that. But in a football game analogy, we've been through the first quarter, we've been through the second quarter. I'm not sure we've gotten to the third quarter on this issue. This is an issue that has to be addressed at every level of government. We've been criticized for the fact that we have used code enforcement and building code issues to address Town Center. I want to remind you, the first words in the petition, it was to address insanitary, John, let me borrow the petition, I'm used to using the American word, not the British word. "Insanitary or unsafe inhabited dwelling accommodations exist in the city of Jacksonville." This petition says it. We acknowledge it. As a staff, we are mandated by law when we find things that are not acceptable to address them. My latest understanding, which comes from a conference call, today is Tuesday, so it would have been Friday, says that there are about 170 of the 700 units in Town Center currently occupied. Those units are what I'm going to call the least bad. That's terrible grammar. My English teaching wife will get me when I get home for using that. The other thing is, the city management has met with seven companies to talk about redeveloping Town Center. You have gentlemen sitting on the back row over there from New York City. They are one of the companies that we have met with, and the Wees family is going to, I'm sure, make comments under the public hearing tonight about what they would like to see as part of Town Center. So yes, we've taken some actions that have caused some negative, but we're also trying to find solutions. I have some thoughts and closing comments that I'd like to make after you have the public hearing. But at this time, Mayor, we appreciate the courtesy that you and the council have given, that the public has given. At this time, we would like for you now to open the public hearing.
First off, any questions, Councilor Dr. Woodruff or Mr. Carter? At this time?
Yeah, I got a few. You mentioned Eastern Regional Housing Authority?
Yes, sir.
Do they have a board, and do we have from the county or city, or any representation?
Two of us that you asked that question. They do have a board. In fact, we met by team Zoom-type phone meeting today with their representative. They have positions for 10. They have only eight members. It covers...
Ten counties.
Ten counties. And they do not have any representative from Onslow County. And this gentleman, I believe, had been there since 2014, and he said, "There's not ever been one since 2014 from Onslow County." The one from Jones County actually left the board at his request, not his request, but the, he calls them commissioners. The commissioners asked to step down. And so Jones County has no one now. So again, there's 10 positions, two of them are unfilled, and from my understanding, that was two unfilled is for a position from Onslow and a position from Jones County. He expressed, "We'd love to do more homes, but there's no money," is what his bottom line was today in Onslow County and in Jacksonville. They still do, and from everything that I know, and I think from city staff, an excellent job with Dudley Manor over at JLD Drive off of Plaza Drive.
Mr. Jackson, let me add to that. As you can appreciate, we haven't had a representative. If you attend a meeting and you really have no money to do anything with, how many times are you going to go back to the meeting? Yes, it's probably a good idea for Onslow County to appoint a representative to that. The reality is, from what we are learning and what we're trying to educate you on and the public on, is go ahead and appoint. The bottom line is, that housing authority can't build one additional unit in this city. They can't build one additional unit anywhere. All they can do is maintain what they have. And that's a sad state of affairs.
This time, I'll recess the regular council meeting up with the public hearing that's required on this matter. And I would ask if anyone who's present wishes to speak. Mr. Mays, if you approach the podium there and give your name and address to the court.
My name is James Mays. I live at 1054 Country Club Drive, Jacksonville. So back before you guys, again, the good news is, we were awarded the $5 million from the county. So we will be doing a bond deal in the city of Jacksonville on the property that you guys signed an agreement for us to go forward on. So that's the exciting part. We're just trying to figure out the financial side of it now. So from a bonding standpoint, you can go ahead and count on a minimum of 84 units. We're trying to get additional financial capacity to make it to 180 units. We feel pretty good about it. So that's the... So, that's the good news. One of the parts of the good news I got to talk about tonight. The other thing is, as I promised you earlier, we will be having, starting renting units, taking rental applications on our project that Dr. Woodruff mentioned out on Blue Creek School Road. That's 80 units. We will be starting taking rental applications in March. So, that's pretty close. And about that same time, we're going to be breaking ground for another project right beside that one. And that's another 72 units. So, just in those, that one area, we'll be, you know, producing 152 units. And it's, of course, all affordable. We already have a project here in town, which Dr. Woodruff mentioned, Wittengett Park, which was 50-some units, 56 units. That is 100% occupied. So, we are into the program. We love Jacksonville. We show our presence here. We've been involved in a lot of projects. It's just not just ours, but others that we have been, you know, constructing. My company's been probably, over the years, we've probably built 1,500 or more units. We believe in the program. It's affordable. It brings the best of all worlds together. You get tax credit world, and you get a private equity fund. So, you know, we are bought into the ballgame. We are an investor. So, that's the good thing. The way these projects work is that, and we're getting ready to do one. Matter of fact, Phoenix Park will be submitted this year for Mr. Walker, and we'll be renovating, if we get awarded, if he gets awarded, we'll be renovating that project as well. So, the good thing is, this program allows us to go back and rehab these projects later on. So, that's a good thing about it. So, just in our deal here in Jacksonville, so we're going to end up with 208 units that we know for certain, okay? That's already a done deal. We are submitting this year on a 9% tax credit, which is one of you guys' consent items. We're going to submit two projects in Jacksonville. A senior project and a family project. Now, in more likelihood, we're not going to be awarded both of those projects. It just doesn't happen. It'll be unusual if we do. And they're highly competitive. So, there'll be other contractors who will be submitting, you know, deals in Jacksonville. But we feel good about it. We like what we got submitted. And so, we know there hasn't been a senior deal submitted in quite some time in Jacksonville. So, we're excited to submit both of those. We're hopeful that we're going to get one of those. And then by October, we'll be submitting the bond deal. And we're hoping by then, you know, we'll have our funding worked out so we can get up to 180 max units, or we can be around 84. So, that'll be determined by the financial criteria that we have, you know, that we're dealt with. I like the program because, you know, it gets a chance to bring in the tax credit world, okay? And it also brings in the private funding, equity investor side. So, it's a better, it's a better program because it makes you set aside funding to keep the buildings up. You can go to any of these affordable projects around town. I just advise you, just go to them, and you'll see how well maintained they are. And so, that's one of the criteria. When we do this, we have to fund a pretty serious amount of money upfront for closing happens to make sure that these projects are kept up, you know, kept up to date. So, personally, I think it's a better program because it gets the private investor like myself involved in these. I like what we do. I love it when I go to these communities and see these folks who need this housing. And we're going to continue to, this is our home. So, we're going to continue to, you know, every year, we will be submitting a development here in Jacksonville. So, until we don't have any other land to submit it on. So, that's our goal. We've been doing it for quite some time now. I like that the county chose us. I think we did a very good job in our presentation, and I think that's why they awarded us the contract. So, that's my take on the affordable housing side. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you might have any.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you all property manage all 1,500 units that you mentioned?
No, we do not. We have, we are in a relationship with a company called Property Management Company that we've been in business with now since we started doing our own. They manage 10,000 to 12,000 units, I think, is what they do. They are located in Greensboro. So, they manage all our facilities for us. That's just not our cup of tea. We're not, that's not our expertise. So, we just, we just basically sub that out.
Gotcha.
Out of curiosity, who makes the decision? Are they the same people that someone would go to with a voucher, maybe?
Yeah. Section 8 vouchers are allowed. They are allowed. So, what would happen is, our management company, which is partnership management, they'll be setting up an office here pretty soon. And they'll start taking applications. As you know, the criteria is, is a, it's pretty extensive. And you can't get into these communities unless you have a pretty clean record. So, they do all that for us, and we never had an issue. We took a, we took a community in Ashburn, North Carolina. That was absolutely horrible. Drug-infested. And we completely redeveloped it. Won an award at the state level for what we did with it. And partnership management helped turn that community around into a really nice, nice area. So, keep your fingers crossed that we're able to get a deal this year. You know, we lost one of these too. And we know we're going to do the bond deal, so it's just a matter of time.
I got a question. Eastern Carolina Human Services do Section 8 vouchers as well?
Yes, sir.
So, this would just be another organization doing the same thing?
See, what the good thing is about, if we're successful, we get the tax credit. So, we don't have to worry about the funding side of it. So, it's just another avenue for us to get to where we want to do, what we want to do, and also help communities like Jacksonville do these. We own these in several areas. This is not Jacksonville. So, we own a, we own a community up in Aiden, senior community up there. I love it when I go to Greenville because I want to, I go by there. I don't ever fail, when I go to Greenville, I don't go by Aiden and look at our community and these seniors. They got the flowers out. You know, they're just, it's so nicely done. And it just makes me feel good, you know, when I go by there and see those. So. Any other questions?
Questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark McCluskey, 166 Center Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina. So, I just want to talk a little bit about my involvement in affordable housing as it relates to East North Carolina and more specifically here in Jacksonville. So, since 2006, I've been a housing planner specializing in affordable housing, funding, development, and construction. And in that time, I've been involved in about 500 affordable housing units here in Jacksonville. And during the same time period, about 1,500 units of affordable housing throughout the state. Altogether, that represents over $200 million of investments in affordable housing. Through all these projects, the main form of funding has always been the low-income housing tax credit. As you know, it's a very competitive process. At the same time, it's probably been the most successful housing program we ever had in our country. The program relies on the private sector, like James was talking about, the private sector to develop and construct the affordable housing through partnering with investors which purchase the tax credits. In exchange for the tax credits, they bring the equity in, cash equity, to be able to construct the units. Under the program, there's a long compliance period for affordability. It's an initial 15-year period and extended 15 periods. So, on day one, you're starting with 30 years of affordability. And that, that compliance period also goes as far as maintenance also. There's annual inspections, both from the State Finance Agency and then the investor themselves come down and conduct property inspections each year. So, as James said, it's been a successful program. I believe it's been a successful program simply due to the nature of the private sector investment and involvement. So, as James, some of this will be a little redundant. I'm sorry. But as James mentioned, we have several projects here in the development stages. Springfield Park Apartments on Blue Creek School Road, 80 units. And then we're starting our second phase of 72 units. Then just the stuff we're seeking funding for now will result in about 250 new units. While the tax credit program has been extremely successful, it's also very competitive and sometimes may seem like a very long, drawn-out process. But that's the case for most development projects with inherently long lead times for approvals, permitting, funding, construction loan closings. So, it's just, you know, sometimes it'll take four years to get a project funded, and then it's two or three years just to get to a closing. So, you know, we'll be submitting some projects next week that, you know, probably the third time we're trying it. But it's a long process, but in the end, it results in a great product. So, we're not the only group that does this in Jacksonville. Since the inception of the tax credit program in North Carolina, there's been over 800 units of affordable housing just in Jacksonville with other groups. And there's many groups that continue to seek new opportunities. So, we won't be the only group in town that may submit an application this coming week for new development. So, I mean, that's basically, I just wanted to give counsel an idea of what I've done in the community, what the private sector has done in the past to develop affordable housing and what we have planned for the future. And I'm happy to answer any questions or
A couple of times, it's been mentioned the tax credit award program. Who is the entity that awards these?
So, it starts with the IRS. The IRS makes an allocation of credits to each state. Each state gets a certain value of credits based on population. I think North Carolina probably gets about $142 million each year. But don't quote me on that. It's somewhere around there. And then each state has the ability to create their own housing, housing finance agency. So, each state has the housing finance agency. And they're charged with making a program to essentially allocate credits for certain projects. So, in North Carolina, it's a competitive process. Each January, it's a submittal of your project, and there's a large criteria of what you need to submit. And then there's a threshold of who can submit. You can't just show up and say, "I want to build tax credits." You've got to go through the program and get qualified. And we've been designated for a couple of years now. Before that, we partnered with other qualified developers, but we are now a qualified entity. So, the agency gets submittals. So, they go in Friday at noon, and I'm guessing they may end up with 150 or 160 applications. And they'll end up funding 30 to 40 projects, maybe, sometime in August. So, it starts with the IRS and works down at the state level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Name and address to the clerk, please.
Friar Weiss, 152 Manhattan Avenue, Brooklyn, New York. First, I would like to say thank you to the mayor, city council, for the time. We're here for one simple project in the city of Jacksonville, North Carolina. Town Center Apartments is currently 694 units. Through our understanding, the city is in the shortage, in a real crisis mode when it comes to housing, given that there's a 4.5% vacancy rate in the city, which is below the 5% level that puts it under a crisis mode when it comes to housing. Town Center Apartments currently has 694 units. Are they nice and beautiful? No, they're not. They have a lot of issues. As far as we noticed, it's not going to be cheap to gut renovate them, but we will have to gut renovate them. And when we say gut renovate, we mean strip it down completely and bring it up to code. It's something that can bring back to the city in the course of two years, close to 700 units on the affordable market, if we go this route of renovating, gut renovating the old units, the current units. We sat with Dr. Woodruff, and we saw some proposals. It would be great to redevelop brand-new the units, but that brings us to much longer timelines, as the developers just said out here. It's a longer process. Takes time to sell the tax credits. It's a lot more involved, and it takes, it's, we're looking seven to 10 years on a project like Town Center to be fully redeveloped. We're looking seven to 10 years at a minimum. To keep the current, we're looking at 18 to 24 months and have a full gut renovated project with affordable rents without asking for the city to come in and give us any kind of crazy incentives, any kind of incentives. Which will make it a lot cheaper for the city, and it will alleviate housing shortages at a faster pace. I know a lot of people most probably came in and said, "We're going to do the same thing." And I'm sure the old owners most probably said the same thing as well. That's why we sent, I believe we all sent this out to city council today. Basically, we give down here, we're, projects that we did, we're bringing in professional contractors. We've done projects this size. We did in Petersburg, Virginia, similar, 575 units, over 64 acres. Project is fully completed, fully operational. Last I checked, it was around $900 in rent, including the rubs, keeping the housing affordable for tenants. And those were down units that were very similar to Town Center. They had 130 tenants living there when we acquired the property. And we slowly, not slowly, in a fast pace, but we gut renovated all the units. It was a three-year project. We were out of there in less than three years. And everybody's happy. The city's happy. The housing needs that the city needed were taken care of. And we keep on continuing to work with the community. We work with the, we always come and work with the community. See what the communities need. We're willing to do some redevelopment if there will be tax incentives because redevelopment is very expensive. New development is very expensive, and it will, without, without city incentives, we will need to charge premium rents that won't make it affordable anymore. It will not alleviate the affordable housing issue that the city needs. So, we come up, we come with a plan to bring back the 694 units online without asking the city to come in and help us getting the funds. Only thing we ask from the city is work with us to help us bring it up in code and work with the city manager, city inspector, to get approvals so we can move forward with a project like this. And hopefully, that this will be able to alleviate a lot of the issues when it comes to the affordable housing in the city. It's not going to be the final answer on everything, but I believe this 700 units will make a big dent in the city's housing crisis. This is my team members, Joel Levkowitz, Moses Weiss. We've been working for, as a group, we've been working for five years together. And in real estate, when it comes to projects like this, we've been working before that even. I've been working in real estate since 2010. I've been working in construction before that since 2006. Joel has numerous brand-new buildings that he built in New York. We have a portfolio built in the Midwest. We have in all different kinds of communities and communities with AMIs like New York, where the AMI, the median housing income is higher. We also have in the Midwest where we have a lower median housing income. We deal in every community. When we buy a property, we come and we open local offices so they understand the needs of the local people, the local tenants. And we operate with them, work from our home office in New York to make sure that the local offices are okay. We come in twice a month to make sure that everybody is happy on the ground. We give out numbers to, our personal numbers sometimes to tenants to make sure that we have a relationship. We don't buy, we don't come in and buy a property to bring it up and then have a nice day. We're selling it, and we're day, we're selling it, and we're out. We hold our properties. We have a track record, we hold our properties, we're long-term. We are here to keep a project, bring it up to par, keep a project, and keep it as long as we can. And we try not to sell. That's us. So we want to come in. We noticed that the city has an issue. We did a lot of research. It's about two months that we're looking at this. As Mr. Woodrow said, they sat with seven, eight different companies, groups, on acquiring this property. I also actually spoke to one of the groups involved. They were, they were in already seven or eight months in due diligence on this property. And they basically told me it's a lot harder than they thought. We bring to the side, to the table, a lot of professional experience, how to get a project like this done. That's why I threw out the name, anybody can check it up, Summit Point Apartments in Petersburg, Virginia. It's a beautiful project. We're bringing the same contractor who was here sitting in Mr. Woodrow's office. So we should get a feel of, that we're coming in with experience, we're ready to do it. We just want to make sure the city is going to be here working with us. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
The project that you said that you did, where you actually had, I forgot the number, you said number of inhabitants or residents still on site.
The, and in Virginia?
Yes.
One-hundred-and-twenty.
One-hundred-and-twenty. What did you do with them in the meantime?
We kept the housing up, we kept them as tenants. When we had new units completed, we moved them into the new units. We didn't go and vac, it was vacated, I mean, they vacated, most of it was vacated before. It was kind of like Town Center, where they left the best of the units, as they said, the best of the units. Those were the ones they left occupied. And we came in, we started right away, we were pushing out, after month four, we were pushing out forty units a month. So over, by month seven or eight, we had everybody relocated to the new units, to the renovated units.
You sound like you want to do this, you're ready to do this. What do you see as your biggest obstacle?
My biggest obstacle would be if the seller doesn't want to sell.
Just kidding.
Biggest obstacle from the city point of view would be if, if I sit down the city inspector, and some, he will require something crazy, I mean, I haven't had that coming up, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. We plan on bringing everything up to code, from firewalls, electrical, everything up to code. That's our, that's what we usually do. We bring it up to current code.
If our inspectors work under the minimum housing standards and also the state health code, state, state building code, fire code also.
An offer to the owner of Town Center?
Yes, we're working with the owner.
Okay. So does it look like they're going to accept your offer, or do you have a feel at this point?
We have a feeling that it's, that we might, that we're close to a deal.
Okay.
Let me mention something. One of the concerns, because you talk about median, median income. Problem with Jacksonville is a lot of times, our median income is based on the military dollar. So it has to be adjusted, dealing with the part of the community that is not connected to the, and I don't know what the percentage of that is, that's not connected to the base or on active duty. But we, we have several different, you know, income levels here. But unfortunately, that military dollar is included in it, and a lot of times, was it extra, the BAQ, BAQ is considered in that amount. So when it comes to our rents, that is, that kind of puts folks that's not, that's not in the military in a bad situation if they're lower income. So I hope that is considered as you go forward, too.
Yes, it is. We're going to, well, once we get into contract, we're going to be doing a full due diligence and a full market research on the housing income. But preliminary numbers show the average median housing income for a family in the U.S. is sixty-two thousand. I believe in Jacksonville, North Carolina, it's forty-four thousand and change. Versus, let's say Cincinnati, Ohio, it's forty thousand and change. So I believe Jacksonville is lower than national U.S. average, higher than the Midwest. But we will adjust it as a mark, we'll do a market research, a full market research once we're in contract to readjust the AMI. And we plan on being around the thirty percent of the AMI. That's, that's our market that we would like to be as affordable housing.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Dr. Washington, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Ephraim, first of all, thank you and your family for coming down here, your partners for coming down here. I'm glad to see that you brought your better-looking brother, Moses, with you tonight. Moses, good to see you again. Let's say for discussion purposes that you're able to work out a contract to purchase the property on a timeline, because, you know, I don't want anybody to think that this is waving a magic wand and suddenly things happen. Realistically, from today, if you're able to buy the development, would we see the first rehabbed units one year from now? What's your thought?
Let's give a dates. If I put in this contract, let's say it's February first is when we put it into contract, six months later, I should be able to close on the deal. Four months after closing, if we have the permits, I mean, that's something we could be working with your office, hopefully, while we're in contract, so that doesn't, so we can start right away, hit the ground running, once we close. Four months later, we're supposed, hopefully, per timeline, we're supposed to have units rolling out. So we're looking at approximately ten months.
Thank you.
So when you say you're going to gut these out, what exactly are you gutting?
We're going to gut it down to the beams.
To the beams.
Sheet rock, and every beam is going to be inspected. Certain of the, some of the beams, some of the structures have structural issues. Some of the beams have to be replaced, they're out. On the worst units, definitely, a lot of them. But when we go in, sheet rock is coming off, everything in those units are coming off, brand-new HVAC, brand-new kitchens, brand-new floors, brand-new bathrooms, brand-new plumbing, brand-new electric, everything brand-new.
Have you had the opportunity to check the sewer, plumbing, that sort?
The sewer mains, not.
The plumbing?
Plumbing underneath.
Underneath? Because, you know, we heard there were some problems there.
That's going to be part of our due diligence, once we're in contract.
But in our discussions with them, we have certainly discussed that.
What are your configurations for these apartments? Are you looking at like a one-bedroom, a studio, two-bedrooms, or possibly a max-up to three-bedrooms?
Currently, the units are sixty-three one-bedrooms, sixty-three three-bedrooms, and five-hundred-and-seventy-two two-bedrooms. We're not planning to change the configuration of the apartments, the layouts.
And you're looking at purchasing all of the units, or just a certain portion?
All of it.
All of it.
Other questions?
I do like the idea of you having people on the ground from your organization here in Jacksonville, if you purchase these units. Because one of the issues, we've seen owners that are actually absentee. So they didn't know what was going on. They was relying on a property management company that really wasn't doing anything for them or the tenants. So the idea of you being here, and if we have any problems, we could come to your people directly, is a great concept.
That's a model that we've built since we started working together, since we started buying and acquiring properties together. This is our model. We keep the management in-house. We open local offices. We have offices in Cincinnati, Indianapolis, and Florida. We have, across the board, wherever we operate, we have local offices, local teams. The local teams, they understand the best, the needs of the local people. We're New Yorkers. I know people, we give out, we have an attitude to ourselves, I know it. Everybody tells you, "You're a New Yorker," you know? This is the way it is. So we, we don't understand everybody's, the local needs. We know that. So that's why we open up always. We come in, we open up local shop, we open up a local office, local employees, they're the ones that are our eyes and our ears of what's going on on the ground. For us, it's all about, we want to make it work. This is our business model, this is our business plan. Our tenants are our customers. Customer service, that's where it starts.
So you actually be bringing jobs into the area, too, for the local economy?
Yes.
So when you do projects of these, of these packages, say for instance, like the project you did in Virginia, how much of the city employees, or I should say, the residents that live within that city's home, what percentage of your jobs were allocated to engage that particular community that you built this particular housing complex?
When it came to construction, we had to bring in professionals that know what they're doing. So we have contractor groups, they hired the local subs when it comes to do the renovating part of the construction. They might bring in people from other states, that's possible. But that's during construction. During, once construction is done, when it comes, that's where we bring in our own personnel into the mix. From property manager, that will be a local person. The employees taking care of repairs and maintenance, those will be local. Everybody working here, everybody, the office will be here. The tenants' complaints will go through a local office. Everything will be run out of a local office. So a property like this, on average, will require approximately ten to fifteen employees, somewhere there, that those will all be local residents.
Well, thank you very much. It was very enlightening. Appreciate you taking the time to come here and see us tonight, you fellows, too. Sounds good.
Safe travels.
Right, does anyone else wish to speak at the public comment? Okay. So this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter and ask counsel. And one thing, go ahead. Sorry. You might be saying what I'm going to say.
Thoughts and recommendations? First of all, I really would like to thank Mr. Maes and Mark. Also, Moses, good to see you again. Good to see you. You've seen this slide twice, I'll show it to you one more time. Housing is a need nationwide. The federal government recognized it in thirty-seven. The goal was to house the poor. The results? They built low-income housing, they created large-scale projects, they created affordable rents, and guess what? Long-term residency. There was unintended consequences, long-term residency. The purpose of affordable housing should never be lifetime housing. It should be housing that helps you when you need it and you move out of it eventually. We have heard, and it's factual, the rents that are in the current affordable housing developments simply are not enough money generated to maintain the units. I'll recall again what John read to you. There are many, many housing developments that are sitting vacant today. Why? Because there's not enough money to maintain them. They created pockets of poverty and economic stagnation. The Faircloth Amendment, the results? It stopped federal funding for new units. So it doesn't matter tonight whether you approve a housing authority or whether you deny it. There is a reality. There can be no new housing authority units built with federal money. If it's going to be built, it has to be built by the private or the federal tax incentive The Faircloth Amendment recognized that the federal government could not fund the solution, and that the private sector had to be involved. The results have been public-private partnerships, they've created mixed socioeconomic developments, they have stressed economic mobility to move citizens out of poverty. What is economic mobility? Economic mobility is when you are making a certain dollar amount, and through skills and connections, you're now making more. And then you make more, and then you make more. That's the goal every one of us should have for every citizen in this country, is that nobody is left behind. And guess what? That's exactly what happened by the nineteen-thirty-seven programs. They left people behind. The Faircloth Amendment says, "No more." And again, the petition tonight was good-intended. But the reality is, you can adopt a public housing authority, but you're not going to get federal money to build one unit. See if I can move this forward. The public sector, I apologize, let me see if I can get to where I'm supposed to be. There are two housing authorities already exist in the city. Yes, you can create a third. But neither one of those two housing authorities, nor one that you create, can build another unit. We have one housing authority that concentrates on the housing voucher program. Marsha Wright helps run that. They do an excellent job. We talked today at the state level. Housing vouchers are frozen, just like new money. There are over six-hundred people waiting to get approved for a housing voucher in Onslow You're not involved in the housing voucher program, even if you created a public housing authority. Marsha Wright's already doing a great job. They have over five-hundred-and-eighty-two, was the number that I've counted, five-hundred-and-eighty-two vouchers that are currently out there. And every month, they disseminate two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars a month, two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars a month in federal money to cover those housing vouchers. They have over a hundred, according to the ladies we talked to today, they have over a hundred vouchers that are sitting unutilized. Why? It's not the public housing authority that provides the housing, it's private citizens. They don't have enough people in Onslow County who want to be in the program as homeowners or property owners. But if they could find a hundred units today, according to what we were told this morning, there are a hundred vouchers just sitting unused, because the owner of the houses doesn't want to be involved in the program. You've heard us say many times, there's only one federal program for new construction, the competition, as you heard, is tough for scarce funds, public-private partnerships are the future. You've seen these numbers. I want to stress again, compliment Onslow County government for putting up five million dollars to help. Compliment you for selling property at a discount. Complimenting you for eliminating slum and blight. Complimenting you for building single-family homes. The federal tax credit program needs to be expanded at the federal level. You heard what Mark said. Where does it start? With the IRS. You've seen these things. Let me see if I can get this to move forward. Here are my recommendations. First of all, I want to state again, the petition is well-intended. There is a need. Nobody on the staff, nobody who's talked to you tonight, nor you, none of you believe that we do not have a housing issue. That is not the issue before you tonight. The issue before you is, do you need to create a public housing authority? I hope you've seen through the testimony, through the facts that have been laid out, facts are facts. These facts say, there's really no... These facts say, there's really no, nothing is gained by creating it. You have two housing authorities currently in existence, neither one of them can build new units. New units cannot be built, as we've said. The public-private partnership is working. Counsel, without creating a public housing authority, has done so many good things, and I hope that in the future, you will continue to be committed to doing those things. Continue to work with the county and with the private sector. Work for economic developments that build people. And last, I'm asking you and recommending to you that tonight, you have a vote, that you vote to have the city attorney prepare a resolution of denial. That is not turning your back on public housing. That is simply answering the question that was asked of you. Do you need to have another public housing authority and you as it? I'm asking you to vote tonight to deny that petition and to direct the city attorney to bring back at an appropriate time that resolution. Do you have any questions about my recommendations?
Any questions on Dr. Woodruff?
I agree with the public-private partnerships. One thing about this petition, it got us to start talking about this issue. So I'm glad that it was actually brought up. In the 70s, under E. Washington Wooton, as the pastor of Sandy Run Missionary Baptist Church, and actually a relative of mine, it was Deacon Jasper Arnold, it was his land and I, and Herdes Coleman was all involved, I can't remember all the entities, but those stick out. I remember walking the land, you know, as a little boy before they even built it. But they had an idea to have public, have some housing for people of low income. And I've seen generations, because I had a lot of family there, and some of those that were there eventually moved out, and a lot of the children that I knew that we grew up with, they were able to move forward, social mobility. I think we need to start looking at that. I know Ron and Lily, you had brought that up quite a bit. But with our community partners, we need to start, you know, dedicating ourselves more into, you know, finding out more about social mobility and how we can work through the community to lift people up. You know, a lot of times, until you see better, you can't be better. And if the opportunities are not there, then you got to figure out a way to create the opportunities. So I totally understand that. Also, going back to, you know, when you dealt a lot of those housing, so-called, the projects that were in the cities, there's a lot more education that has to be involved about why those failed. You know, you're talking about jobs moving, you're talking about certain people moving out to the suburbs, certain groups, you talk about redlining, you talk about people of color that couldn't get housing when they tried out in the suburbs. So there are a lot of reasons why these projects not only failed, but because the people couldn't move forward. So one thing about walking through Town Center during this crisis is that I saw a lot of people who were trying to do better. And you could tell by some of the stories that how there were, a young man who was, I can't think of his name right now, slips my mind, but how he came here from Puerto Rico and what, where he started, but that's not where he's ending. So we can work with, you know, trying to work with those we can work with, you know, continuously. But I do agree with public-private partnerships. The precedent is already set with Mr. Maes and his company, so hopefully we can do the same. If Town Center is sold to this group of fellows here, then hopefully we can do the same with you. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we, that we direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution of denial.
Second. Discussion.
I'd just like to say this was a fantastic presentation about something I really didn't know anything about when I came in here. I mean, I, you know, had heard it just via the petition and for something as complex as this, I thought you did a great job of explaining it to us.
Very educational.
Very good. Absolutely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So you have your, you're going to prepare a proposal or a resolution for that. All right. So now we're going to do some reports, and I'm going to start with Mr. Jackson.
Yes, this weekend, the Muffa Point Marine Association had their Martin Luther King Ball, and I enjoyed, thank you for the opportunity, I know the mayor couldn't be there. But they raised money for scholarships for a lot of young people to attend college, and it's just a great, great thing. I really enjoy that, and they do a lot in this community, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Soss, third word. Mayor Protimbit.
Yes, I couldn't help but think, after the presentation of the gentleman from New York about Town Center apartments, that 20, 30 years ago, the present owners purchased that property and the city somehow endorsed that effort supposedly on a basis that would help them get tax breaks through bond sales. I don't recall exactly what the incentives were in terms of that property being sold, but it was being sold on a basis that the units would be rehabbed and some of the problems that were being experienced would be resolved. I'm elated to hear about the prospects of the other developers, and particularly the ones we heard tonight, offer plans for bringing that unit back into modern-day standards. But somehow, I want to make sure that the errors we made 20, 30 years ago, that somehow we learn from those mistakes and make sure it doesn't happen again. And I'd like the staff to look into that and keep that in mind as we progress to facilitating a turnover of Town Center instead of a problem and asset to the community.
I wanted to echo what, what Mr. Thomas said. Thank you, that was very enlightening and interesting at the same time, and I know you all did a lot of work, a lot of research to get to that point tonight, to where you were able to make a very good presentation, and I just want to say thank you to both of you. And I did enjoy hearing from the group from New York and also from our local group, Mr. Maes and his team, so thank you for coordinating that. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Thomas?
No report.
Dr. Washington?
I wanted to echo what Mr. Wharton and Mr. Bittner said about this presentation tonight. I'm regretful that Ms. Tracy Jackson couldn't be with us tonight with this presentation. But the, one of the things that I want to, it just, my mind goes back to where we were several months ago and the residents from Town Center, just thinking about where they were going to lay their heads at night. And Dr. Woodruff gave us some guidelines, how one, we needed to think about safety, but we needed to operate within the safety of the laws. Because unsanitary environments can bring about a lot of different issues, not only for the residents, but also for the city of Jacksonville. And I just want to, first of all, commend Dr. Woodruff and his staff for being able to give an excellent report, ascertaining all of this important information, coming back to counsel and sharing this with us. But also, at the same time, I just have to say kudos to each and every one of the members of the council. I mean, when you think about where we were struggling with this issue and wanting to do right by our citizens, and where we are today at this very moment in time, I think we need to give ourselves a pat on the back. We've come a long way, we've had to make some tough decisions. And when Mr. Wharton talked about that seal, that motto, this is a caring community, and the prospect of being able to have a group coming from New York to be a part of this caring community, and being able to offer affordable housing to those in this city that needs it. I think oftentimes, we, the council, are very, very quick to say to our staff, we thank you for your service, we thank you for the laborious efforts that you put forward in order to make our jobs a little bit easier, but hopefully tonight, I hope each one of my fellow council members would just steal away a little bit of time to yourself and applaud your efforts in terms of wanting the best for our residents and now being able to have the best for our residents. We need to give ourselves a pat on the back for a job well done. Thank you.
Very well said, thank you. Dr. Woodruff, before I give my report, I'll ask you.
We would like to take just a moment before you do your report, Mayor, to do a one-city moment. We can bring that up on the screen if you would. And of course, the one-city moment has to do with the young gentleman who was lost, and through the efforts of so many people, he turned out to be just fine and brought back home. So let's run the one-city moment now.
One of the most important things that we really need to talk about is finding this child. So last night, about 4 o'clock, Amiel Gabriel Christiansen got off the bus, and he was seen about 17:45. Since then, we haven't been able to locate him. Somebody in this community has seen something that is very important to us, and we need to know that.
In almost 24 hours, he's been missing. Is that concerning in terms of what his condition may be with these temperatures?
Well, 15 minutes is concerning with a six-year-old boy. So we're going to continue to do everything we can to make sure that we find him safely. We want to tell you tonight that we have found Amani. He is safe. We have EMS checking him out. He was within a block of his home, actually underneath one of the trailers. And so the investigation continues, but all of our partners behind us, from a number of different agencies, are responsible for this positive outcome. We're so glad that we found him and we're so glad that he's safe, that we thank God that we found him. You know, he's got his whole life ahead of him, and, you know, when a child goes missing, it devastates a community. And I think that this is the best outcome that we could have. I want to thank everybody for participating. I want to thank, thank you all for getting the message out. I want to thank our partners behind us. It was truly a community effort, and so we're thankful to our community. During the day, I can't tell you how much food we have, that community members and restaurants and other people have donated to help us with that effort. We have dozens and dozens of community members that wanted to participate. We're organizing them to be in in the morning. So we're thankful that we have a community that comes together when a situation like this arises. And so we're thankful that they provided us with everything we needed.
Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Carter, did you have?
I'm going to come down there and give my report.
Okay. All right. I would like to have you, Ms. Carmen Miracle, Madam Clerk, join me up here and help me read this script. Or at least join me.
Come on, stand up here.
Carmen began her career with the city of Jacksonville on September 14, 1998, and was promoted to city clerk in July of 1999. She earned her Certified Municipal Clerk designation in 2001, her Master Municipal Clerk designation in 2007, and her North Carolina Certified Municipal Court Certification, Clerk Certification in 2012. She served on the United Way Board of Directors and was the city's United Way Employee Campaign Coordinator for nearly 10 years. In 2006, she was named the United Way Campaign Coordinator of the Year for Onslow County. And due to her leadership that year, the city received the Spirit Award from the state United Way. Carmen also served for nearly 14 years as the city's Staff Liaison and Treasurer for the Jacksonville Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disability, which grew and transitioned into the Onslow County or Onslow Commission for Persons with Disabilities. In 2010, she was elected by her North Carolina counterparts to serve as President of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks. She received the North Carolina Order of the Longleaf Pine in 2013 and was chosen by her peers as the North Carolina Clerk of the Year in 2015. That was in Durham.
It was.
Went to see there.
You did. Couldn't get you to dance with me, though.
You're too good. As the mayor, I have the pleasure, I've had the pleasure of working with Carmen for more than 14 years now, well, actually 16 years, because I've two years on council. I want to congratulate her for having such a wonderful career and offer her best wishes in the next phases of her life. But again, I want to thank you so much for the support that you've given me, especially me, that has made the office of mayor an easy transition and operation for me. You had a big job trying to keep up with me, because I know that several times, she had to call me twice about being at something or whatever, but she's, you're going to be very missed by all of us. I think I can speak for the council on that, that you've done a lot for all of us. It's been an honor to know her, and we will miss her, but this is not goodbye, as I know that she will drop in on us from time to time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's, just very briefly, because you know I'm a behind-the-scenes type of person, but it's just been an honor to work with each and every one of you. It's one of the best days of my life, the first day I came to work at the city. I've enjoyed every minute of it. I have a fabulous staff, you have a fabulous staff. I've been fortunate to work with wonderful managers, most particular Mr. Woodruff, and the best city attorney in the universe, and the most fabulous mayor, and he's not been hard to work with either. He's made it easy for me, as have all of you. So I'm going to miss you all, and Clark and I are going to travel and see the world and our own country and spend time with our twin grandsons, and so I look forward to that. But I am going to be visiting and keeping track of what you guys are up to. Thank you very much. And Mr. Bittner.
Mr. Bittner.
Yeah, I didn't see his photo.
Thank you, Carmen, for all that you've done during your stay with us here at the city of Jacksonville, and hopefully, again, like I said, I hope you won't be a stranger and that you'll be around, especially if we need to. I was talking to Beverly Bigley, who's one of your fellow clerks that you know the other day, and she still gets calls from some of the clerks asking her for advice, and she's been retired, how long? About five or six years, longer or longer?
Comeritus, how about that?
Yeah, there you go. But really, retirement, it's really not that bad. It's not that bad. Dr. Woodruff, did you have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.